Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight to discuss the town's business. We ask that as we go forward, you would guide and direct us and help us make the best decisions for the town and its residents. We ask that you would guard our safety and that you would be with the utility department and the police department and the fire department as they do their due diligence. There's a lot of sickness in town right now and we just ask that you would be with the families who are in distress and who are having a hard time and just ask us to, ask you to guide us and help us be smart enough to know where the needs are so that we can help those folks. Just be with us and put a hedge of protection around us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, good evening, everybody. Start a new year off here.
Good evening.
Hopefully smoother than last year. So, anyway, we will get underway. Everybody got a copy of the minutes of the previous meetings?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Do the claims and warrants. Claims and warrants?
Yeah, it's on your list.
Yeah, well, can we have them?
Are you going to give the amounts?
Oh, okay.
At the end of month?
Yeah. End of month, December 2020 is $82,068.10. And for the January meeting is $464,681.97. Seems like a lot of them again then.
I know.
Well, let's go around the room and see what we've got now going on. John?
I got, uh... So, quick update. I checked before I came. We've had 25 calls for service in January so far. That's not including any proactive police activity. And we've had two ordinance violations. They completed the floor in the office. It looks good. Somebody might have noticed a little part of the decals on the truck because they were coming off. Kyle has agreed to make it right, but he works a full-time job elsewhere, so it's a matter of finding the time to get it together. Sent you a short email yesterday. I'm working through wiring issues on the Explorer. I don't hear that it was ever installed professionally and kind of suffering repercussion with that. And outside of that, I asked for permission to add Cameron Martin to the part-time roster to fill out, fill in when needed. He's got all the equipment he'd rock the officer. He's been to the academy. I think it would help relieve some of the calls when I'm going to the academy here, which if they haven't, you can take this. But outside of that, that's all I have.
Okay. When you say part-time, reserve, part-time, which?
The, we've got three guys in the pool right now, part-time, and one added fourth, if possible, which comes at no cost until they're called over. So, just another officer that's already trained and ready.
Okay.
I have no objections to that.
I don't either.
Okay. Anne?
I just came to ask a little bit about baseball. We're still thinking about having a baseball league this, this year. Numbers are going down if they continue to go down.
Hang on one second. We have to have a motion for Cameron Martin.
Sorry about that. I make a motion that we allow Cameron Martin to be a part-time deputy.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, Annie.
That's no problem. I should have slipped down with this.
Fuck, we're all new to this.
My first question is, there was a park ordinance passed two, three years ago that says that the baseball league and softball league has to reimburse the town $300 or pay the town $300 for, I think it's called an impact fee. I want to know if we owe that for last year since we didn't do anything last year. We had utilities turned on one week and turned off the same week, I think. We were ready and we were not ready, so...
You had no income whatsoever last, last year?
Nothing. We didn't do anything. We, um, we were able to play over at Dana some, but nothing here in the town. We had no income here. We did not even open up the concession stands. We didn't ask for donations. It was just, it just the timing. We just said, we just stopped it, so...
I would, my opinion is, no. Yeah.
It was out of your control on that one.
I appreciate that.
Does that need to be a motion? I make a motion that we exclude the, is that the way to say it? Exclude the baseball league from paying the $300 impact fee?
Well, to use last year's speed for 2021?
Yes. Waive it. How about we say waive it?
2020.
Would that be the thing to do?
Is that how we would?
We waive the $300?
Or they paid it already.
Oh.
They paid it last year.
Did I pay 2020? Because I paid two years in a row. I wasn't sure.
So then we need to move 2020 to 2021.
Okay.
So we'll be no fee this year.
Yeah. Why don't, there you go. That's the way to do it.
I'm also the president of the softball league. I haven't talked to many about this, but I know as far as us, we cancel everything.
Yeah. It was out of hand.
So just, just include the softball league and baseball league in that.
And then, so I don't have to do anything with that. And I need to know if things continue to improve, if it's all right with the town, that we do have a baseball league. Everything will be outdoors. I mean, I, it takes a lot of planning. I have to start early. And we've been, I know that there's some teams from Rosedale that will want to come here because they're probably not going to be, they don't think they're going to be allowed to use the Rosedale fields at the school so much. So if they don't, they would like to play here also. I have a gentleman lined up to build the dugouts at the new field, so that one will be completed and ready to use and that'll bring more people into town, which is always our goal, but I don't know that that's a good goal at this point, but we can separate the people.
I mean, I would think spectators would have to go by the guidelines, facing out, distancing masks. But as per playing, I think there's no reason why. The schools are still doing sports.
Schools are playing indoors, so we want to play outdoors.
Yeah.
Right.
It helps us out a little.
I wouldn't see why not. I mean...
You know, unless things could change tomorrow, who knows?
I'm pretty sure it was all right to, to you guys, that we go ahead and get started and trying to at least plan a season or something.
Absolutely.
And I just guess, I mean, this is just kind of a given, but sometimes you need to say things out loud that, as far as disinfecting of the concessions and the bathrooms and dugouts and all that, that should be considered highly, I think.
Right. And I think, you know, I'm just going to say, sometimes we have people that volunteer for extra things just to help us out a little bit, and that can be somebody's job every day.
There you go.
If I can't get to it or whatever, but it's, it's not hard. It's not a problem. And, and I can mark off the bleachers if that's what we need to do. They can sit around the fence rope, you know? As I say, they can, people can make whatever changes and operations they need to make.
I don't think you got, in my opinion, I don't think you have to go to the expense of doing all that because I don't see them out here every day cleaning this playground equipment for the kids at school.
And you know, we've been to softball tournaments all week, all summer. There's, there's no cleaning going on. So, but we'll do the best we can and we've got, you know, the bathrooms is not a problem. We can keep that cleaned up and, and I can, we wipe down the bleachers anyway because of the dew and then because of the brick dust gets all over them, so they might have to still...
And, you know, as it progresses, you know, we'll just have to stay in communication to know what...
Right. If you hear something before I do and you can tell me what I need to do or what we need to do. We haven't contacted the other people within our park for million league, but I just need to make sure we have a place to go and play so that we could tell the people and practice for all the kids, so... Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Get back to normal.
Yeah. Be nice. Skip?
Kicking off 2021, like there's no tomorrow, so this park park had 13, well, 16 runs total. And we're 21 days into the month, so it's going to be a while. Appreciate all you guys have done.
Thanks for all you've done, too.
And another 52 runs from last year, so...
Is there any word on a fire truck or?
I got them to get with Kathy after this. This is a side note. Kurt's still light duty. I don't know for how long. He wasn't quite sure yet either, so he's got another appointment coming up. We'll, we'll fill in while we can, so Manny's down a little bit with everybody, obviously COVID and a lot of people working during the day now, so PK and Keith have stepped up a little bit and up an hour a day, so if you guys know of anybody that's interested, I'll get a place for them.
All right. Okay. Carrie?
Nothing, thanks.
Paul?
Park Board met the 10th and we held our election for Kathy and the officers are the same as they were. And we pretty much have canceled the chili cook-off. It's basically three weeks away and kind of hard to have, to make money on a fundraiser when you can't have people come. So, that's all I have.
Dustin?
Well, I just have a contract that the last meeting in December, I think it was, we discussed the IFA water audit and then talked to Kathy via email. We went ahead and completed that. I submitted, so you get a copy. The, to Gary. Did I send it to you or sent it to Gary?
I'm just sending it to Gary, I think.
I'll double check. Either way, it's, it's done at this point. The contract's for hourly, not to exceed $5,500. We have spent $4,000. Don't anticipate spending anymore, so we saved $5,500 for standard fee. We did it as quickly as we could. And if I didn't email, all the emails, the due date with the validation was December, or January 1st, excuse me. They've extended that to February the 15th without, not really any penalties, you just get a slap on the wrist next time you come to the state agency asking for money on the water side, so...
So Gary just had to validate it and then does he send it back?
He's, I've got instructions and everything. He sent it in on behalf of the community. Yep. It's, there's no fees or anything, no, I'm surprised the state doesn't charge like $100 or something.
Yeah. Because they can't?
There's nothing else. I'll send instructions. There's a checklist of who it goes to and everything. But on your guys, you guys know your water system, but just to give you a little background, a good, a perfect score is 100. I've validated or audited eight communities so far and the highest, I think, is 48. They're all similar to Monazuma. A lot of it's on record keeping from the meter side. When's the last time you had your well meters tested or calibrated? They're different items. Monazuma's, I think, is close to never. When is the last time your residential meters were tested? That's not really an issue with you guys because you have new meters. But the state wants you to be testing a sample, you know, 10% a year, which is, nobody can do that. You can't afford that stuff. They want you to test and calibrate your well meters every year. They want you to do a financial audit internally every year and a financial audit via CPA every three years. They want you to have a map of your system and then go out just for the fun of it and dig a section of water main up to make sure it's where you say it is. Obviously, that's some, that's wasting money in my opinion.
That's crazy.
So, you know, if you get, they want you to increase your score every year and there's some stuff that Monazuma can do relatively cheaply and easily. But if you get your score up to 60, I mean, that's going to be a, a good score for a community of Monazuma's size. Obviously strive for 100, but that's impossible. But I, I can't see Monazuma or anybody with the financial means of somebody like Monazuma scoring above a 75. It's just, it's not feasible. You guys on the manpower or the financial means to do any of that stuff. It's going to be Indiana American Water, Aqua, Indiana, CEG and Indianapolis. Those are the, the communities and, or systems that are going to be able to score really, really high.
How does, how do the towns know what their expectations are? I mean, are they sent these expectations every year?
So you, so I, I'll send it out and I'll include like a little PDF that shows what you need to be doing. All of this record keeping on the, on the more technical side. You guys already keep adequate records on the, the financial side, but I can send a short little summary of what you could be doing to improve your score and the things that you do good well already. But it's, it's just, it's just Indiana or the state wanting to keep tabs to make sure that you're making, I mean, it's kind of the point where communities are going in every seven or eight years requesting loan stuff to make their systems better and they want to make sure that they're giving the money to communities that are helping themselves. And using that money to do water maintenance is great, but if you don't do anything on your own, that's, you know, mapping the system, you know, keeping tabs of things, doesn't cost a lot on your own side. They want to make sure you're doing your part if they're giving you money.
Accountability.
Yeah.
Well, it's just like the, you said, the meters, there's only one main meter.
Yes.
At the wellhouse, so you're saying you got to take it out once a year, put a blank in, have somebody come in and test that meter.
So they want somebody to come in and test it to see how accurate it is and then calibrate because there's, one's for the electronics and the other is for the volume metric flow that goes through it. And they want somebody to come out every year and do that. It's, it, I don't think that makes sense for Monazuma.
No, because it's just an old propeller meter.
Yeah. It's, it's not going to go off that far and you guys are losing enough water for that to make sense, I guess. If you guys had a water loss, I can't, I should have wrote it down. I can't remember your number. But if you guys were losing 50, 60% of the water, I would say, that'd be the first thing I do is go calibrate to make sure that that's right. You guys are good, you did, already did the step of putting in new residential meters. That's making sure that people are getting done what they should for using. You guys are on the right track. It's just the score doesn't show that you guys are as high as you should be, I think.
So what Peerless does once a year, come in, that doesn't count when they, when they do each well?
Because they just clean, they inspect the wells, right?
But it, they also, how many gallons each well's putting out?
So they do a well pump test.
Yeah.
But they don't do a meter test.
No.
Because they, they look at, so this, this looks at the system from a edge of treatment plant distribution system wise. So everything after the meter is what we look at. The meter, you know, if you had a treatment, a big treatment plant, doesn't look at anything at the treatment plant and it doesn't, they don't care if your wells, I mean, your wells could be spewing water everywhere. They don't care about that. You know, you could have a big guy's right there. They don't care about that. They care about how much you actually pump is the meter to how much you're billing. Ideally, they want those numbers to be the same, which is never going to happen either, but I'll put something together and I'll, I'll send it to Kathy.
Okay.
Just so you guys have an idea of where you stand.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right. Motion to approve these.
So these are the engineering services expenses, correct?
Yeah. It's the contract for the, our services.
Okay.
It doesn't have the actual hours spent. That'll come on the invoice normally.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the engineering services agreement to exceed no more than $5,500. Is that good, Kathy? Got it? Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll send that over.
Okay. Which way are we going? Jimmy?
Well, we're on site down.
Okay.
Westside tractor. I'm going to have them put in a bid for our three generators. We've got to have them work on, gone through every year. Kathy didn't like the others. We're going to have to do this one. Didn't like the jacket. So anyway, Westside tractor on the new tractor we got, one side of the bucket is three eights out. It's about three eights out on one side, but we're still...
Bye, Destin.
We still have that right now, but they called, told me today that they are going to be probably changing out the bucket and the front arms on it. So they'll load it up, take it away, but they'll supply us with a tractor when one comes, or when five comes. So the veteran's tree service, the guy's cut down this tree over here on the corner of Ida and Strawberry. He's got the two of them there on Jefferson Street and he's got the one at the cemetery to do yet and he's got to take and cut a third out of the top of the one on Jefferson Street there where he took them two down. I don't know why he didn't finish that. If I can do, there's not an address there, so I don't know. You all know where it's at. Anyway, the one I'm worried about sinking, maybe it's looking bad. But he should be back in for long, hopefully. Okay, so as far as the guys, they still, the two of them still need to do their gas tests. They have been doing them, but they are not caught up where they probably should be. And that's both of them. They're about to run out of time on some stuff. So we have, the beds are coming in next week, the gas inspection. All the water mirrors have been changed. Down the other than the handle, there's five, 10 or something other. Most of them have got remotes on them for, we have to dig them up this spring to replace the open all. Getting close to running out on CDL times, too. I don't know what you guys want to do about that, but neither one of them has the CDLs yet. One of them has the permit, the other doesn't. That's all I got.
Have they been to try to test and not passed or just not been?
Well, they've been, they've both been.
Okay.
But I don't know if they've done enough.
That needs to get pushed to a priority to get them. So that needs to push to a priority to get them back in there.
Right, because it was, but the COVID messed that up, closures and...
Yeah.
And you've had people off with COVID, so...
That makes sense.
You'd have to make sure it gets set up and get them going.
Yeah.
Right.
So that needs to be a priority. They need to get on it.
At least find out if they can even test right now.
Yeah. Good enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We should have to move forward with that. Just try.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah. Different direction, though. The folks from the different churches that put on the Easter egg hunt collectively have been talking online about what's going to happen, what's not going to happen after last year not happening. What's being looked at? One of our more active volunteers threw out a suggestion during this conversation and basically the idea is, okay, we can't have kids out there running out picking up these trays off the ground and all that, but maybe do a drive-through type event where we give the kids bags of candy and stuff, put randomly prize tickets in them for the prizes, like you wouldn't have eggs and stuff like that, give them the food, the hot dogs and chips and all that like they would have got when they go through the line afterward and set up at the park and do that on the same day that we would have had it, which would be April 3rd. The logistics and details of making it all work are still being nailed down, but we were pretty confident that we can, so we just wanted to run it by you guys and get the okay to plan on going ahead and doing that.
I make a motion, we allow the local churches to hold the extravaganza as a drive-through on April 3rd in Aztec Park.
If conditions permit.
If conditions permit.
Yeah.
Park County is orange right now. We've gone from red to orange. So hopefully that will continue to go down.
It's, it's complicated. You have to actually be orange two weeks before they take you down as far as the guidelines. So it's...
Let's hope.
Yeah.
So are you going to need repulsor on that thing?
I'm not sure yet. We probably will need something because we'll have to have very controlled traffic flow of people coming through. As we start nailing down exactly how we want to work these things, we may come back with details to follow, if you will.
Yeah.
I second that motion. If we can do it within the guidelines and make it work, yeah.
Anything to get back to normal.
Right.
Yeah. Right. Exactly. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And there was, there was several thoughts on this. One, we wanted to keep something going on for the kids, still have something. And two, you've got people that are used to helping out and being involved with stuff like this.
That aren't being able to right now.
And events like this are very inertia driven, you know? When they're going, they'll keep going. When they're stopped, they'll stay stopped.
Right. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, yeah, the fire department did the children's Christmas party as a drive-through and it worked just fine. And of course, you know, the...
Been doing with the community meals.
Community meals have been drive-through.
And we can draw off a lot of those experiences to figure out ways to make things work.
Yeah.
So we, we believe that we can pull that off.
Yeah.
Okay. How about from Roffe?
She's tired, nope.
Okay. Okay. We have two water sewer bill adjustments. Nancy Axon Water Only and Wesley Retleag Water and Sewer. Account numbers on there.
I make a motion that we approve the adjustments, the two of them.
Seven?
He did. He should say it.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We got two billing adjustments. One of them is $240.93. Now there's $4,805.98 due to the sawmill meter batteries going dead. And they had to come out and manually count, do the, sort of back to the factory settings and had to come out and calculate and manually do everything on that, but that's all been taken care of.
Good deal. I make a motion, we allow these two billing adjustments.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We got one, one meter adjustment for $1.93.
It's a big one.
It's a big one. I make a motion to accept the one meter adjustment.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash oh one dash oh one that was a correction to resolution twenty twenty dash twelve dash oh one. And the, the amount was incorrect, I believe.
I'll make a motion that we allow resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero one dash zero one.
On favor? And we have an update. Dwayne Borders has purchased eleven property, the Leverens property on Adams Street. It's not all finalized yet, but.
That's great.
Soon as the weather, maybe March, you'll get a good start on it and we'll get it done. It's just an update, so. Now let me sign these.
That's good.
These come back, huh?
That's for the.
Adjustments.
Adjustment and the resolution correction.
Diana?
I have two things. First, I wanted to say thanks for getting the fire hydrant fixed downtown. And the second thing, is it weather that's delaying the repair, the rest of the repair? Is that what it is? Let it settle? Is he, okay.
Yeah, he's letting it settle. He's got two posts cut and they're already painted and everything.
Okay.
They're going on each side of it. Hopefully not be hit.
All right. I just hadn't been around anybody to ask and I wanted to find out. Thank you. The other thing is this. I received a call this week from Gary Jones and it, it was a great idea and it's a kind of a unique problem created by COVID. And a lady who was a longtime resident of Monazuma, Monazuma area, passed away. She no longer lived in this area, but her services, her funeral services are here. Her daughter lives in Utah and wondered if there was a way to do a Zoom meeting for the funeral services or something at the chapel. Because the services will be at the chapel at Oakland Cemetery. And I hadn't really ever given it a thought. We have talked many times at our meetings about internet services at Reader Park for cameras purposes down there, security cameras. But I'd never given it a thought about internet at the cemetery, but it sure makes a lot of sense. There is a way with an iPhone or an iPad or Apple product where you can create a hotspot. So your, your phone or your iPad could be a hotspot using your internet service. And then another device could connect to that hotspot and use that internet to do a Zoom meeting or whatever other social media or meeting app you would like to use. And I don't know, I know there are also devices that you can purchase that are, can be used like that. But I don't know the cost. I don't know any of the particulars about it. But I feel like it is worthwhile and something for us to look into because there are going to be more situations like this largely because of the pandemic. So is there, does someone here have any knowledge of anything like that, John?
So, so basically everything in our vehicles has ran off this hotspot.
Okay.
And I have two and most generally, only one is in service.
All right.
In these rare circumstances right now, I'd be willing to let them use.
Oh, that would be.
One of ours, if you put me in touch with the right person or whoever's gonna.
Oh, that would be.
Be utilizing the.
Okay.
We can save that cost because they're already paid for it. Outside of that, I mean, any device would probably stream that.
I'm not sure on window operating systems or any of the other phones, how that works. But I, I feel like that would be awesome. Is that funeral tomorrow?
It was today.
It was.
Yeah. It was unfortunately today.
Ah.
The Android devices and Windows ones will typically do the same also.
You can create a hotspot with them? Okay.
And you can connect onto, not like what he's talking about.
That's what I do.
The main thing would just be a matter of.
Okay.
It'd just be a matter of coordinating with your finger homes and stuff like that and somebody, you know, getting everything set up and ready to go, you know.
All right. Well, I think we've just about got the problem solved. That's awesome. I wish we had realized, I, I didn't even think about already having that available.
It's gonna be a rarity since I probably have enough equipment to make it happen.
Okay.
If it's something that's gonna occur a couple of times a week, we may have to live.
Okay.
I don't think it is.
All right.
Sounds more fortunate that we can still have funerals around here and not like the big cities.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Well, another question I had was the metal roof on the chapel might prevent us from getting a signal too. I don't know how that would.
Drop down there and check it. I've never given it a thought.
Yeah. Well, sometime let's try it. We'll just get together and try it. Okay. Well, there you go. How about that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Donna?
I don't think I have anything.
Hey.
Don't think so.
Kathy? And where'd you say Scott was? I didn't. No, don't know him anyway.
He's not gonna make it.
For the fourth time in a year.
Whoa.
Okay, then.
I like the motion of John.
Second?
Okay.
On favor?
Thank you, everybody.